Okay, we're quite. Okay, so let me open the textbook. I was thinking I would just do like a couple of questions of Kramer's Rule and then a couple of questions of, a couple of questions, or a couple of questions of the other part of chapter three that we didn't do, and it was, oh, I'm in the wrong textbook. Can you find it? Yeah, inverse formula, inverse formula, formula for the inverse and then Kramer's Rule. Those are the two parts of chapter three, right? So 3.2.1 and 3.2.2, and that's it. So may as well start with the inverse formula. So let me find a question for that. Actually, I have my questions here. So, oh yeah, 3.2. Oh, I guess, yeah, I'll start in this. Okay, so yeah, today we're going up to 4.9 because I have not done much practice after that. So, yes, okay. Okay, here. So we'll start with 3.2.1 here. And also, yeah, the chat you can use for talking to me is in discussions. Yes, discussions, there you go. So that works. Okay. Well, should we use discussions or homework help? It doesn't particularly matter, but whatever. So 3.2.1 is let A equal 1, 2, 3, 0, 2, 1, 3, 1, 0. And use the, like, first of all, determine if it has an inverse, and then if it does have an inverse, use the inverse formula to find the inverse. Okay, so, so, so to tell if it has an inverse, well, it will only have an inverse if the determinant is not zero. So let's try to find the determinant first. And I will do that. I think I'll do one row operation quickly to find, to do it. So I'll do row 3 minus 3, row 1. Right? So this will be 1, 2, 3, 0, 2, 1, 0. So then 1 minus 6 is minus 5, 0. That's a 3. Yep, 0 minus 9 is minus 9. So the determinant of this across that is going to be the determinant of 2, 1, minus 5, minus 9. Uh, yes, and the determinant of that is going to be negative 18 plus 5. So not 0, whatever that, you know, so negative, negative 13, not 0. So it does have an inverse, right? Does have an inverse because the determinant of A is not equal to 0. So we can find it now using the formula, right? So the formula in general is A inverse equals 1 over the determinant of A times the adjunct of A, where the adjunct is the cofactor matrix of A transposed. Okay, so now we need to find the cofactor matrix of A, right? So the cofactor, I'm going to write it down here. So 1, 2, 3, 0, 2, 1, 3, 1, 0. Okay, so the cofactor matrix of A is, let me just open this up, sorry. So each position is the cofactor of that position, right? If you expand across that, right? So the first position of the cofactor matrix, so not equal, but goes to, is going to be, uh, so this one here is going to be the determinant of that, of this green section, right? So 0 minus 1. So it'll be just minus 1. All right, so minus 1. And then, and then it'll be, the next one over will be for number 2 position, or let's do number 0 position. So it'll be the determinant of, so this, so 0 minus 3, but it'll be positive 3 here because it's in a negative cofactor position, right? So again, you got to remember your plus, minus, right? You got to remember that it looks like this, right? A 3 by 3 matrix. Um, so then for this position, it'll be 2 minus, that's a, that's a 3 and a 2, yeah. So 2 minus 6, so minus 4, okay? Then over here, it'll be 0 minus 3, so 3. 0 minus 3, yeah. And then for this position, it'll be 0 minus 9, so minus 9. This position, it'll be 1 minus 0, so minus 1. And then for this position, it'll be 0 minus 6, so minus 6. This position, it'll be 1 minus 6, so yeah, 1 minus 6 is minus 5, so 5, because it's in a negative position. And then finally, it'll be 1, 2 minus 0 in a positive position, so 2. Okay, so that's the cofactor matrix of A. Okay, and the adjunct of A is the cofactor matrix of, oops, cofactor matrix of A transposed. So it's this transposed, so it'll be negative 1, negative 9, 2, 3, 3, negative 4. Wow, hold on, got, we got a little messy here. Let me, let me write that again. So negative 1, negative 9, 2, 3, 3, negative 4, negative 6, 5, negative 1. There. Okay, so now we do 1 over the determinant. Oh, so I guess we need the determinant. I didn't get the exact determinant. So the determinant is negative 13 equals the determinant of A, right? So the, so therefore, A inverse, if A inverse is 1 over the determinant times the adjunct of A, it's going to be 1 over 13, negative 1 over 13 times the adjunct of A. Negative 1, 3, negative 4, 3, negative 9, 1, negative 6, 5, 2. And now multiply the negative 13 in. So it'll be A inverse equals 1 over 13, 3 over 13 is nothing, so negative 3 over 13, 4 over 13, 13 is a prime number, so it's not going to do anything. Uh, negative 3 over 13, 9 over 13, 1 over 13, 6 over 13, negative 5 over 13, and negative 2 over 13. And that's the inverse of A. I will check that, just to make sure. So I just did 3 point, 3.2.1. I gotta scroll. 3.2. Nope, I'm on the wrong section. Uh, yeah, looks right. Yeah, there you go. Good. So I did everything right. Okay, anybody stop me if they have questions? Just let me know, and I will stop and do it. Okay. Okay, so let's see another one. I mean, I don't know how, I think that'll be enough for finding the inverse, like, that's how you do it, unless someone wants to see another example. I'll do another example, but other than that, I think that might be good, and I can move on to Kramer's Rule. But if anyone wants me to go back after, just let me know. So Kramer's Rule. I'll find a question for it. So maybe I'll try 3.2.19. Seems like a Kramer's. 3.2.19? Or a different one? Well, I just, I, I just did a 3 by 3 matrix. 3.2.19 is Kramer's Rule, is a Kramer's Rule. Right? With a 3 by 3 matrix, with a, with a 3 by, yeah, with 3 variables. That's right. So that's the one, okay. So 3.2.19. So before, oh, first, actually, I'll write the question. So use Kramer's Rule to find the solution to x plus 2y plus z equals 1, 2x minus y minus z equals, oops, equals 2. Yeah, and then x plus z equals 1. So quickly, just in general, I will write Kramer's Rule, and we'll just find it here quickly. So Kramer's Rule is that xi is equal to the determinant of A. Whoa, okay, can't write an A. Determinant of ai over the determinant of A. So determinant of ai is the A matrix with the i-th column replaced with, with what? With the, with the, so the, these numbers, this column at the end, 1, 2, 1. Right, the solutions. Right? Yes, that's right. Okay, so first of all, we got to get the coefficient matrix for this, so it's going to be 1, 1, 2, 1, 2, minus 1, minus 1, 1, 0, 1. So that's the coefficient matrix, of course, times x, y, z. Right, and then 1, 2, 1. Okay, so for each solution, right, so x is going to be equal to the determinant of the A matrix with the first column replaced, I'll write it as a1, I guess, with the first column replaced with 1, 2, 1, which is actually just the determinant, right? Over the determinant of A. Well, I can actually right away tell this is going to be 1 because the first column is already 1, 2, 1. So it'll be whatever the determinant of that is over the determinant of that, so it'll be 1. Okay, y will be a little more complicated. So the determinant of A with the second column replaced over the determinant of A. Okay, well, so what's the determinant? First of all, let's write that, let's write that in. So it's going to be 1, 2, 1, 1, 2, 1. Yeah, it'll be posted and it's recorded. It's, it's recording right now. So yes, it will be. Um, and then we want the determinant of this actual matrix. 2 minus 1, 0, 1 minus 1, 1. Okay, so let's just take it one at a time. I'll take this first one here. So what's the determinant of that? I'll expand across this, I guess, just a bunch of ones. So it's going to be the determinant of 2 minus 1, 1, 1, minus the determinant of 2 minus 1, 1, 1. Yeah, plus the determinant of 2, 2, 1, 1. Okay, I'll try to write in a meter after that. I wasn't looking where I was writing, so yeah. Um, so the determinant of this is 2. So 2 times 1 is 2, minus negative 1, so 2 plus 1, so it's 3, minus 2, so 3 again. Hope we did that right, yeah. Plus 2 minus 2 is 0, so it's 0, determined 0. Okay, that doesn't matter, I guess, yeah. Okay, so that's 0, well, so then y is going to be 0. Right? Doesn't matter what the determinant of the bottom is. It's 0 over something, so it'll be 0. Um, and then finally, z is going to be the determinant of A with the third column replaced over the determinant of A. So I still haven't actually had to calculate the determinant of A. So that's going to be 1, 2, 1, 2, negative 1, 0, 1, 2, 1. So 1, 2, 1, 2, negative 1, 0, 1, 2, 1. All over the determinant of the bottom. 1, 2, 1, 2, negative 1, 0, 1, minus 1, 1. So most likely here, we will have to actually calculate the determinant. So I will expand across that. So it's going to be the determinant of 2, 1, minus 1, 2, plus the determinant of 1, 2, 2, minus 1. So 4 plus 1 is 5. Um, negative 1 minus 4 is negative 5, so it's 0 again. So then this is 0. I hope that's right. Let's see. If I did, it wasn't right, then. Oh, someone's saying, um, it sounds like I did something wrong, but lagging out. I hope it's not me. Yeah. Okay, I can tell someone's asking a question, but they're lagging out completely. Oh, okay, now I hear, now I hear, yes. Yeah, I hear you. Oh, okay, yeah, 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 I'll go over it. There you go. So the solution is 1, 0, 0. So I start here, right? So the general Kramer's Rule is that the i-th variable is the determinant of A with the i-th column replaced over the determinant of A, where A is a coefficient matrix, right? So the coefficient matrix here was 1, 2, 1, 2, minus 1, minus 1, 0, uh, 1, 0, 1. Um, and so the i-th column is replaced with this, with this coefficient vector, right? So to find, to find x, well, I looked at it, so we want the determinant of A with A replaced with this over the determinant of A. Well, in this case, notice that the same thing, right? Because if you replace this column with 1, 2, 1, it's, it's already 1, 2, 1. So whatever it is, it'll be 1. This one, I did the same thing. So you see, the second column is now replaced with 1, 2, 1 instead of 2, negative 1, 0. But the determinant of this up here, well, that, that determinant is, the determinant of A2 is 0. So the answer must be 0. Right? That's how I found here. The determinant of that is 0. And same thing happened here. Final column is 1, 2, 1. Determinant was 5 minus 5, which is 0, so the whole thing must be 0. Yeah. 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 Hmm. That's across, the first row here. Yeah, yeah, the one highlighted. Yeah, that's the one I expanded upon, right? So 1 times 2 minus 1, 1, 1, and then negative 1 times 2 and minus 1, 1, 1, and then again for the last one. Right? So you good with that one, or, or anything? Yeah, I can explain anything else if you. Okay, okay. Um, I can do another Kramer's Rule problem if people want. Does anybody want me to do another Kramer's Rule? Just give me a shout. Another one? Okay, sounds good. Uh, let's find. I'll just find one here. Um, oh, that was the only, that was the only 3 by 3 one. 3.2.8? Well, in Cutler? Oh, okay, okay. 3.2.8, but 3.2.8 in Cutler is also pretty cool. It also seems like an interesting question, but yeah. Um, okay, so yeah, 3.2.8 from Nicholson. Uh, I will do d. I guess I'll do d. Okay, so d is 4x minus y plus 3z equals 1. Then 6x plus 2y minus z equals 0. And 3x plus 3y plus 2z equals negative 1. Okay, so solve this using Kramer's Rule. So first, I'm going to write the cofactor matrix. So 4 minus 1, 3, 6, 2, minus 1, 3, 3, 2. So there's our cofactor matrix. I'm going to just check I did that right. 4 minus 1, 3, 6, 2, negative 1, 3, 3, 2, yeah. Uh, x, y, z equals 1, 0, minus 1. Okay, so based on Kramer's Rule, we know that x is equal to um, A1, so the first col, I know that this isn't very standard notation. It's just like, I'm just calling it A1 with the first column. A with the first column replaced. Oh, sorry, not just, not just that, the determinant of that. The determinant of A1 over the determinant of A. So determinant of A1 will be 1, 0, minus 1, minus 1, 2, 3, 3, minus 1, 2. And we need the determinant of the bottom. So 4, 6, 3, minus 1, 2, 3, 3, minus 1, 2. Okay, so now we're solving this. So let's find the determinant of the top. Um, I will, of course, I think for every step, expand along the column that we replaced. So that's going to be, so 1 times the determinant of 2 minus 1, 3, 2, minus 1 times the determinant of minus 1, 3, 2, minus 1. So determinant of this is going to be 4 plus 3, oh, almost wrote a 6 for some reason. And 1 minus 6, so 7, uh, that's going to be minus 5, so plus 5. Uh, so that's 13. Okay, the top is 13. Now let's find the determinant of the bottom. Yeah, I won't do any kind of funny business. No, I won't do anything. I'll just expand across something. I'll expand across that. Um, so that's going to be, so 3 times. Ooh, someone's got, someone's got an air conditioner next to their microphone. Okay, I think we're good now. Um, so 3 times the determinant of negative 1, 3, 2, minus 1. Right, this, this right here, negative 1, 3, 2, minus 1. And then minus 3 times the determinant of 4, 3, 6, minus 1. Right, 4, 3, 6, minus 1. And then 2 times the determinant of of 4 minus 1, 6, 2. Okay, so 3 times the determinant of that is going to be 1 minus 6, minus 5, minus 3 times negative 4, minus 18, so negative 22. Did I do that right? Yeah. Plus 2 times 8, and that's a minus 1, yeah. 8 plus 6, so 8 plus 6 is 14. So negative 15 plus 66 plus 28. And I'll just, I'll just punch this in. Negative 15 plus 66 plus 28 is 79. Okay, so that means, so that's the determinant of the, of the bottom there. So that means that this must be equal to 13 over 79, which I'm pretty sure simplifies to nothing. Never mind, because 13, yeah, okay, I mean, no, 79 is not prime, but yeah, there you go. I hope that's right. So maybe someone could correct me if that's wrong. But yeah, there's x. So then same thing for y, but we only have to do half the calculations now, right? So determinant of A2 over 79. We already know the determinant of A is 79. We don't have to do that multiple times. Yeah, okay. So now let's figure out, so we want the determinant of uh, this matrix with the second column replaced with 1, 0, minus 1. So 4, 6, 3, 1, 0, minus 1, and 3 minus 1, 2. Yeah, I was gonna say somewhat, just about say, someone has. Thank you, Manuel. Thank you. Um, so 79, so I will, of course, expand across this column. I can't really do a vertical line with the highlighter because it doesn't show up properly, so, um, I'll do that. So the determinant of this is going to be, so 1 times 6 minus 1, 3, 2, minus 1 times 4, uh, 4, 3, 6, minus 1. So this is going to be 12 plus 3, yeah, so 15 minus, um, so negative 4 minus 18. So negative 22, so plus 22. 37. So this will be 37 over 79. Does this simplify? It does not. I guess, is 79 prime? I don't know. Um. Yeah, so, so, so I am doing that, but I don't ever think of like to the power of 2 plus 2, right? Or to the, well, this, this would be, this would be to the power of 1 plus 2, so 3, I guess, to the power of 3. Right? Because, because the reason is, is because I just remember that this one will be positive, this one will be negative, this one will be negative. I just remember this layout. Right? So if I'm calculating this one, I flip the sign. If I'm calculating this one, I don't flip the sign, right? And so I find that to be a lot easier to just remember this. It's, it's not very difficult to remember. Right? Right? It works the same. It's the same idea, right? Because this is positioned, this would be, this would be to the power of 3. So a negative number to the power of 3, well, that's still, that's still a negative number, right? So you flip the sign there, right? But, um, uh, yeah, I, I find it a lot easier to just remember that. I got that from Khan Academy. Khan Academy does it like that. Yeah. 79, that's right here. So that's, I kind of got to skip this bit because this is for some, for the other part, but I was finding the determinant of this bottom part. So I expanded across the bottom. So 3 times negative 1, 3, 2, negative 1, negative 1, 3, 2, negative 1. Then negative 3, right, because it's in a negative position, negative 3 times 4, 3, 6, negative 1. Negative 3 times 4, 3, 6, negative 1, sorry, the determinant of 4, 3, 6, negative 1. And then 2 times the determinant of 4, negative 1, 6, 2. Okay, so all good with that? Oh, really? Yeah. Well, okay, well, this will be posted after, so you can, you can pretty sure see it there, or just listen to the thing, right? Uh, this here? Uh. Yes, it is. You're right. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Um, so that's the negative position. That's also a negative position. This should be a positive one. Yeah, I messed that up. So that should be a positive. So this will be just negative 15 minus 22. Yes, so then it'll be just negative 37. So it'll be negative 37 over 79. Thank you for catching that. Good. Okay, so I'll move on to z. So z is the determinant of A3 over 79. All right, so the determinant of A3 is going to be, so it's 4, 6, 3. Uh, I have to find the other part of the matrix. Um, let's find it up here. So negative 1, 2, 3. Negative 1, 2, 3. And then the, the third column is replaced with our, um, 1, 0, minus 1, our coefficient column, our, um, constants column. Okay, so should be actually determinant bars, so just determinant of that, uh, over 79. Okay, well, so I will again expand across this, right? So it's going to be, um, that's a positive position, positive position. So it's just going to be 1 times the determinant of 6, 2, 3, 3. And then minus 1 times the determinant of 4 minus 1, 6, 2. Okay, and so that's going to be equal to, this is 18, um, minus 6, so 12, and then this is 8 plus 6 is 14, so minus 14, so minus 2. And so the answer for z is going to be minus 2 over 79. Okay, and I will just check that answer, unless someone can beat me to it. But yeah. What question was I doing? 3.2.8? Got to scroll a bunch. 3.2.8d, yeah. Uh, somehow I got, this is supposed to be 12, I'm 1 off for this one. This is negative 37. This is negative, yeah. Somehow, somehow I've just 1 off, made some small, small error with this one. See how I did that. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so y is here. Why is it here? I should, I should just go. This is the y section now. Minus 15 minus 22, yeah, equals minus 37. Oh, just A? Yeah, that, that'll be, that's a kind of, this is not part of it. So this is the, finding the determinant of A. Yeah, then, then that's what I did. 7 plus 5 is 12, not 13. Yes, there we go. Not if you ask me, apparently. So there's my mistake. So there's my mistake. Yeah, very good, exactly. Yeah, sorry. That's, that's, uh, oops. Uh, oh, is it? Sorry, there. Is that better? Where does my cam, camera go to? Can you see that line I just drew? This one I just drew? Still can't see it? Oh! This one you can see, okay, I should keep that in mind. I probably will make it smaller, though, my face is not that important, but, yeah. So, I don't know how I'm gonna remember that, but we're about right there. Um, okay, so then, yeah, that's, that's y, and then we did, uh, z here, z was pretty quick. So the third column, determinant of that. And yeah. Does anybody want me to do a third Kramer's rule problem? I will, if anybody, if, if anybody asks me to. I don't mind. Or does anybody want me to do another, another inverse with the determinant, with the adjunct? So, first of all, three point, three point seven, I'll do that one, and also someone else said they want me to do an inverse? An inverse one, that's what you mean, right, like a, with the adjunct, okay, yes, okay, so I'll do both. Uh, so first of, yeah? Oh, you cut out there a little bit, is that what? Fourteen, twelve minus, minus fourteen, so fourteen, yeah, sorry. Okay, so three point, three point seven? Three point, two point seven, okay. Oh, from color. Three point two point seven, there. Yeah, three point, two point seven, and three point, two point eight are pretty good, so three point, two point seven, point seven, is considered, yes. Yes. Uh, so the answer is, there's the three answers, the, the value of z, the value of y, and the value of x, uh, which is here. Okay, right, so that's, that's the solution. So, makes sense? So three point, two point seven is consider this matrix, A equals one, zero, 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 like that. Cos t, minus sine t, sine t, cos t. And does there exist a value for t for which this matrix fails to have an inverse? Okay, so we're looking for a value for t where this matrix fails to have an inverse. So, the only time you can fail to have an inverse is, is if your determinant is zero. Right, so the determinant of this, if I expand across that, is going to be one times cos t, minus sine t, sine t, cos t, oops, that's a t, I'll, I'll write that again. Cos t, so the determinant of that, one times it, right? Well, so the determinant of this is cos squared t, right, plus sine squared t, uh, equals the determinant, well, so, okay, so that, that's the determinant, right? And we're pretty much looking for when does this equal zero? When does? Yeah, exactly, so cos squared theta plus sine squared theta is, is always equal to one, so one does not equal zero, ever. There's no value of t that would make this equal to zero. Alright, so yeah, exactly, there we go. Yes, that was a quick one. Uh, should I do three point, I could, I'll do three point, two point eight as well, because this one's a little bit more of an involved one. Right, so three point, two point eight is asking the same question, but with this matrix, one, t, t squared, zero, one, two, t, t, oh, two. So that's the matrix, when, uh, is there a value for t for which this matrix fails to have an inverse? Let's see, so to begin, I will just expand across this. Right, so it's gonna be one times the determinant of one, two, t, zero, two, right, plus t times the determinant of t, t squared, one, two, t. Okay, so, um, this determinant is two minus zero, so just two, plus t times two t squared, minus t squared. Right, so we're, this is a determinant, like, it's not simplified by this determinant, we're looking for when does this equal zero? Right, because if that equals zeros, then there, there will be a, um, for what t values make that equal to zero, that's where, um, you won't have an inverse. So t plus, um, I guess I have to just put this in, so two t cubed minus t, oh, I could have combined those, I just realized, um, equals zero. Right, so two plus t cubed equals zero, t cubed equals, equals negative two, so t equals the cube root of negative two. And there you go. I'm gonna assume that's the answer. Unless I did something wrong here. No, it looks right. Yeah, it looks right. So cube root of negative two, again, maybe someone checked that, but that seems right to me. So that's the value of t for where this matrix does not have an inverse, where the determinant equals zero. Okay, and then, so someone wanted me to do a, find the inverse using determinant, so I will do that now. So, um, I will choose. Does, uh, does someone have the answer, I think, James, do you have the answers open somewhere? Okay, which, which, can you just tell me, does three point, two point four, is the answer, there is no inverse, or is the answer? Yeah. For Cutler. There's no answer, although, oh, it's a, it's a even number, sorry, uh, three point, two point three then. It's like an actual matrix, okay, so I'll do that one, I, I just don't wanna do one where it's like there is no inverse, right? Um, okay, so this one is saying A one, three, three, two, four, one, oh, one, one. Right, so find the inverse of this matrix using the determinant, using that, that, that formula. So A inverse equals one over the determinant of A, times the adjunct of A. So first, let's find the determinant, right, so to do that, um, again, I'll use raw operations, why not? Well, no, no, it's fine, we don't have to do it, so let's just find it, expanding across that. So that determinant is going to be, so negative one times the determinant of one, three, two, one. Okay, uh, and then one times the determinant of one, three, two, four. Oops, not a bracket. And one, three, two, four. So the determinant of this is going to be, so negative one times, well, don't even have to write that, I'll just make it negative after. So one minus six is minus five, so five, plus four, minus six is minus two. Right, so that's three. Um, so the determinant of that is three, so one-third the adjunct of A, okay, well, now we have to find the a, adjunct of A. So the adjunct of A is the cofactor matrix of A, transposed. So let's find the cofactor matrix of A. So the cofactor matrix of A, the, 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 the like, the, what do you call it? The i j position of the cofactor matrix is the i j minor cofactor, is that what it is? I don't know, I don't have to say the right words there, but, pretty much of the cofactor matrix, actually, I'll, I'll just make the, I'll make the cofactor matrix here, cuz why go up and down all the time? So, the one in this position will be the determinant of this, pretty much, right? And you just have to keep track of, again, this was gonna be the, the, the positive, negative, positive, negative, positive, negative, positive, negative, positive. Just gotta keep that in mind, right, so the thing in this position is gonna be the determinant of this, so it's gonna be four, minus one is three, but, yeah, it's four minus, so, so just three, it's in a positive position, so it just stays three. Okay, the one in this position is gonna be the determinant of three, so three, three, one, one, so three minus three is zero, great. And the one in this position is going to be the determinant of three, three, four, one, so three minus twelve is negative nine. But, yeah, negative nine, good. Okay, the one in this position is going to be the determinant of two, one, uh, two, one, zero, one, two, one, zero, one. And so to find that determinant, it's gonna be two minus zero, um, but it's in a negative position, right? So it's going to be negative two. Okay, then, uh, this is the middle one next, so it's a positive position, so it's just gonna be the determinant of one, uh, one, three, oh, one. So that determinant is one minus zero, so just one. On the bottom here, in the negative position, we're gonna have the determinant of one, three, two, one, so one minus six, it's negative five, in a negative position, so it's just five. And up to the top right, so we have, um, the determinant of two, four, oh, one, so two minus zero in a positive position, it's just two. Now, this position right here, so we're gonna have the determinant of, uh, one, three, oh, one, so one minus zero is one, but negative. And the last one is going to be one, right, so this bottom position here, the deter, the determinant of one, three, two, four, uh, positive, so it's going to be four minus six is negative two. And that's the cofactor matrix of A. Equals that. So did that make sense how I got the cofactor matrix? So the adjunct of A is just this transposed, so three, one, minus two, okay, then zero, minus two, two, negative nine, five, negative one. Okay, so pretty much we just take that, so three, zero, negative nine, um, negative two, one, five, um, two, negative one, two, two, negative one, negative two, sorry. Um, and then we do one over three, so one over the determinant, one over three, times that, so the answer will be, um, so this is, this is A inverse, A inverse. So it'll be one, zero, negative three, negative two-thirds, one-third, five-thirds, two-thirds, negative a third, negative two-thirds. And that's, that's A inverse. Okay. So if anybody has any questions, just shout out, oh, I should have the chat open, I have not at all been looking at the chat. So. Yeah, but that's, that's the question. Though, which one? Sorry? The adjunct? Adjunct, yeah, so I took the cofactor matrix, which was this up here, right? That's what we just, we solved for the cofactor matrix, and I just transpose that. Right, so I, I, I pretty much reflected over this line, that's kind of how I actually think about it, right? So it's, the negative two goes here, the zero goes there, these positions switch, these positions switch. That's, that's the definition of the adjunct of A, right? It's the, it, the transpose of the cofactor matrix. Cofactor matrix, so for this, let's just say, let's just show you, like, so for this position here, right, for this position of the cofactor matrix, I go to the original matrix. And from, from this position, it's as if I was finding the determinant, I would find the determinant of just the, this here. Right, so the determinant of this is three. So three goes there. But you gotta watch out, so every other position is negative, so notice for the next one, for the next one here. Um, if I'm finding this one here, finding this, this, for, for that position of the cofactor matrix, I go to that same position here, and I, I treat it as if I was finding the determinant, so I would be finding the determinant of these things, right? That, so it'd be, the determinant of this is two, right, two times one, minus zero, but it goes here as negative two, because you have to remember this thing, right? Yeah, I also thought that, but I was looking, reading the textbook, and you don't, I, I don't really have a good explanation why you don't multiply it by three. Um, I, I think multiplying by three is when you get into like actually finding the determinant of A, that's like a thing, yeah, I think just finding the, cuz I think when you find the determinant, you're doing, you're doing the cofactor of, well, how would I write that, the cofactor of i j, times the value A i j. That's how you find it, right? But we're just doing this part. To, to do the code. A, a bunch of times, yeah, 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 right, yeah. No problem. Uh, of the two by two matrix, that, you know, of everything except the row and column of the position we're in right now. Right, as if you were finding the determinant of a three by three matrix, right? But you don't multiply it by that number, you don't actually multiply it by the position. Right? Yeah. Exactly. Okay. So anything else from chapter three? I can do more from chapter three, but that's, that's all the, it's, it's just inverse and Kramer's rule. So, unless anyone has any other questions, I'll just move on to chapter four. Give everybody a second. Okay. So, chapter four. Yes, this is recorded. Chapter four, of course, is R N, so we're done with, done with our determinants and stuff like that, right? So, um, um, well, I don't really know particularly what sections people want me to do, because I'm tempted to skip until four point nine. So if there's any particular section between four point two and four point nine, or four point eight even, I'll do four point eight, actually. Yeah, for sure. Four point six point eleven. Okay, that's not part of the homework, but that was fine, of course, we'll figure it out. Four point, so four point six. Okay, so suppose a triangle in R N, that, that one? Okay, I'll give it a try, so four point six point eleven is saying, suppose a triangle in R N has vertices, um, P one, P two, P three. Consider the lines which are drawn from a vertex to the midpoint of the opposite side, okay? Okay, there, so I'll draw this, probably should draw it bigger, actually. I think I can just do this, and then make it bigger. I can. You can see how squiggly my writing is, but it's fine. Um, I'll, I'll finish reading it first, so consider the lines which are drawn from the vertex to the midpoint of the opposite side. Show these three lines intersect in a point and find the coordinate of this point. Uh, okay, so it's pretty much saying, imagine this line. This line. This line. Okay. So what do we know up to this point? This is before the dot product. This is particularly in the section with what, parametric lines. Okay, so we wanna see where these three lines intersect, so the question is, yeah, the question is asking, they find the exact thing. Show these three lines intersect in a point and find the coordinates of these points, so first of all, show that they intersect. Well, first we have to actually write the lines. So um, I guess what I would start doing is I'd label this point, I'd label this point, uh, I guess I'll label it A, or, yeah, I'll label it A, whatever, label this one B, label this one C. We can find B, right, because B is just, B is just, uh, how would I write it? We don't know any numbers here, right, so, um, oh, we also don't know how many dimensions we have. So, um, oh, we also don't know how many dimensions we have. It's R N. So what I was gonna do is I was gonna say, well, B is just the midpoint between P one and P three. And so then we have a line which is P one. Okay, well, it's this right here, so this, uh, I'll change colors. Yeah, I don't know if assuming an N will help or not. Right? So, well, I'll start by saying this, well, so the orange line, I'll just call it O, right? Is going to be, so if I write it in vector form, it'll be P, uh, that's a two. P two plus T times P two B. Right? Uh, similarly. Um, the purple line will be X, um, it will be P one plus T, um, P one C. And then, oh. And then X, the last one which is green. So, green is, so it starts at P three plus T P three A. Okay, well, now we have equations for the lines. Um, where do we, where do these lines intersect? How do we do that without, I guess this should technically be T one, T two, T three? Um. How do we do that without assuming an N? Thinking. Cuz I could just I could just set two of these equal to each other and we could solve for well. Could we solve for T? Um. We don't actually know what P two B is, right? We don't, cuz we don't know the N. Well, let's, what would happen if I set two of these equal to each other? Let's say I set the bottom two equal to each other, so it'll be P one plus T two P one C equals P three plus T three P three A. And what are we doing? We're solving for T. Yeah, we don't know the N, we don't know how, e- even if we knew N, then I could, I could like expand them and I could make equations, but we don't know how many equations there are. And how would we find the coordinates of a point if we don't know how many dimensions there are? Vertex, the midpoint. Well, okay, what if we assume R two? Sure. Assume R two. That means that, okay, so then that means B is specifically, uh, oh, how do I write this? Uh, let's say P one is X one, Y one. P two, X two, Y two. P three is X three, Y three. So B is going to be the average of the X values, so it's going to be X one plus X two over two. Oh, sorry, X one plus X three over two. Then next one is going to be, and it's going to be Y one plus Y three over two, so that's B. Um, A is going to be um, so it'll be, uh, X one plus X two over two, Y one plus Y two over two. And C is going to be, uh, oops. Is going to be X two plus X three over two. And then Y two plus, ah, I put in the wrong one. Um, two plus Y three over two. Okay, well, now we know the points. So we can find these particular vectors. We also know that P two is this. Um. Uh, maybe actually these aren't different Ts. No, they have to be different Ts. I think I set the Ts the same, I'm just thinking, how would I, how would I even do it if I, if this was just trying to find the intersection of two lines? I would just solve for T, so that these would be the same Ts, but that doesn't make sense. Let's just treat it like that. Um. So, since we know these points. I can plug it in, uh, let's see, P one is, um, X one, Y one, of course, alright? X one, Y one. Plus T times P one C, so P one C is C minus P one, so this. Come on. Uh, so that minus X one. So that's, uh, two and three, so X two plus X three over two minus X one. And then Y two, Y two plus Y three over two minus Y one. Uh, okay, equals, P three is X, X three, Y three plus T times P three A is A minus P three, so, uh, that minus X three, uh, that, that is one and two. X one plus X two over two minus X three, Y one plus Y two over two minus Y three. Um, stick it together and solve for T, uh, I guess, maybe, let's see. X one plus T times X two plus X three over two minus X one equals X three, uh, should bracket there? Plus T times X one plus X two over two minus X three. Um. Let's try, let's try to solve for T, I guess. Uh, none of these are the same. Right? But I can just. Okay, this is, I guess this is what I'll do, so I'll say, uh, T, X two plus X three over two minus X one minus T, X one plus X two over two minus X three equals X three minus X one, factor out a T. So it's T times X two plus X three over two minus X one minus X one plus X two over two plus X three equals X three minus, uh, X one. And it would be this over this, I mean, I guess I could simplify, but T equals X three minus X one over um, that whole thing, can I simplify that in any other way? For sure, but. Uh. Could say two times X two plus X three minus two X one minus X one plus oh, mine, uh. I'll write stuff fully, I guess now, so minus X one minus X two plus two X three. And if we get another, oh, I can, I said combined like terms now, so this is T equals X three minus X one over two times. No, not two times. One half. One half times that. Which, well, well, I guess which would be, would just be two, but, okay, nevermind. Um, but I'll still write that, so one half. Um. So, how many X ones do I have? I have negative three X ones. Then how many X twos do I have? I have, uh, none, and then X threes. I have, um, two and one, so plus three X three. So ideally, if I find another, well, so we haven't proven that they intersect at a point, uh, I don't know, that's not what we've done, but if I do the same thing for the other equation down here, we will not get the same thing, hold on, that doesn't make sense. No. Um. That's, hmm, no. There's a solution for T. Yeah, no, this isn't doing anything. This isn't doing anything. Uh. Yeah, I made a mistake here, this should not be, these are not the same Ts, this is T one and this is T two. Yeah, that's T one, that's T two, I don't know why. Yeah. No, yeah. Yeah, 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 um. Well, I'll probably leave it there cuz I want to do other stuff, but I'll think about it more, I'll see if I can figure out something. I think, I, I think I was not supposed to make these the same Ts, this is, this is, these are different Ts. So what I'm thinking, what I would do next is I would then have a linear system, right? I have T one, this is T one. And this is T two, right? And then I could have, I could separately take these, the top equation and the bottom equation, right? The X equation, the Y equation. Linear system, two unknown variables, obviously other than the X, the Xs and the Ys. But for the Ts, and if we can, if there is a solution for T, T one and T two, then well, that just proves that these two lines intersect, that just proves that the, proves that the purple and the green intersect. Um, I guess then you wouldn't have to prove anything for the purple line, for the orange line, you would just say, does that point exist on the orange line? Uh, if so, then it must, that's where they intersect. Um. But will that work? I don't know. I'm not sure, but that's what I would do next. Treat this as a linear system, like with, uh, up here, linear system, and, uh, try to figure something out there. Substitute it in. Okay, but there you go, that's, what'd you say? Okay, yeah, yeah, that's my, that's my go at it. That's my go at it. Um, so, yeah. Four point seven? Four point two. Point, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, four point two point eight B, okay. Four point two point eight B, it's the one with the triangle, the internal angle, internal angles of the triangle. Yeah. So for this one, we have a triangle with, uh, vertices A is three, one, minus two. B is five, two, minus one, and C is four, three, minus three. So, um, well, when I do these kind of problems, and actually in this case, you have to try to put them relative to each other pretty accurately. It's, you can't do just A, B, C like that, you could, and if you get lucky, then it'll be right, but since we're using actual vectors here, the, the position of them does kind of matter. So, uh, I, I kind of just ignore the Z value and I would just treat it like this, so this is A, that's three, one, minus two, but we're just on the X, Y plane, pretend, pretend like that. Five, two would then be like here, right? And four, three, well, four, three would be like here. So that's A, B, C. Okay, so now we're trying to find all the internal angles, of course, uh, we only need to find two and then one eighty minus that, right? Uh, so let's start, let's just find this angle. Right? Let's just find that. Uh, for, this was, this is in oh, so I'm, I'm assuming this is past, uh, dot product, so we're gonna use the dot product for this, right? So the definition of the dot product. Right? So, uh, let's call this vector A C and this vector A B, right? So, A, A C dot A B is equal to the magnitude of A C times the magnitude of A B cosine theta. That theta is important, that's the theta between the two vectors. So in other words, theta equals the cosine inverse of, um, A C dot A B over A, the magnitude of A C times the magnitude of A B. So we just gotta find that, right? So A C is C minus A, right? So A C, C minus A, so four minus three is one, three minus one is two, negative three plus two is negative one. Okay, that's A C. Uh, let's find the rest of them, just may as well, well, let's find, yeah, find the rest of them, so A B is B minus A, so five minus three is two. Two minus one is one, negative one plus two is one. And let's find, uh, B C after this, I guess. Well, uh, yeah, we'll find it in a second, actually, not, not just yet. So, now that we know that, let's also find the magnitude of A C. Magnitude of A C is the square root of one, so two, four, square root of six, right? And the magnitude of A B is also the square root of six. Okay? So in other words, theta for that theta in here, this, this theta there, right? Is equal to the cosine inverse of A C dot A B, so it's gonna be two plus two minus one over uh, root six, root six. Right? So cosine inverse of, um, three over six. Cosine inverse of a half. Right? So in radians. So cosine inverse of a half is pi over three. Pi over three, okay, that's our first angle. We found our first angle there, pi over three. Now let's find the second one, let's do, let's do this one right here. Okay? So I'll call that, I guess this was theta one. I'll call this one theta two. Okay? So theta two is equal to these two vectors, right? These two vectors, so B A, B C, B A dot B C over, sorry, cosine inverse of B A dot B C over the magnitude of B A times the mag, well, not dot, but just times the magnitude of B C. Like that. So, well, B A, right? B A is negative A B. Negative A B is going to be negative two, negative one, negative one. Right? And A, B A is negative A B, right? So that's that vector, and now B C, well, we just gotta find that, B C is C minus B, so four minus five, so B C is C minus B, so four minus five is negative one, three minus two is one, and negative three plus one is negative two. Okay, we got almost everything we need to know, again, both magnitudes are root six. Both magnitudes are root six. And in fact, the dot product is gonna be the same. So, uh, theta two is cos inverse of, so the dot product, B A dot B C, so B A dot B C is gonna be two minus one plus two over, it would just be six cuz root six times root six. Which again, is going to be cosine inverse of a half, which is going to be pi over three. And since two of the angles are the same, that means the third angle must also be pi over three. And there's all your internal angles. They're all pi over three. Okay? Oh, sorry, you got it there? Yeah. Good. Okay, any other questions about this question? First time I did that, I did the same thing, yeah, I think Fatima remembers, I did think I did it with Fatima, right? And, uh, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so it's the Z component. Exactly. And that's enough, because like, in reality, it's like 3D, so maybe the triangle is like going into the screen or out of the screen a little bit, but doesn't particularly matter, this is enough. Enough, enough to get it right, yeah. It matters, it matters because we're doing stuff with like, A, B, uh, is Uh is equal to negative B C and stuff like that, I think, I'm pretty sure it's because we're using this idea, that's why it matters. Right, because the direction of things kind of matters there. Yeah. Okay, so there's that question. Um so. So yeah. So if I. Would you say sorry? Well, yeah, wh- why does it matter? I didn't immediately think it mattered when I first did it, let me think, why, why exactly does it matter? I'm, I'm pretty sure it's because we're using this, right, but let's see, maybe. So if I drew it wrong, I mean, if I drew it like just randomly. What would change, what would change? Um. What would change? But we we did get, well, I did this before, and I did get the wrong answer because I didn't do that, I remember, and we were like, we went through a bunch of things. Yeah, yeah, just, I understand, I understand, just B is different. Um. Yeah, I d- I don't really, I don't know, I don't have a very good explanation for this one, I don't have a very good, I just remembered doing the problem. Try and get many times, we, we couldn't get it right, and then I. Yeah, parallelogram seems like it would matter more, yeah, but. Uh it seems, it seems to still matter for this, I mean, it seems to, because I, and I think another person here is. Didn't get the right answer. Right, so, yeah, I'm not sure. I, I, again, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a good explanation for this one, I don't, I don't, yeah, it just is a fact, maybe I'll try to, I'll try to find an explanation for it. I just treated this, yeah, I just treated like this, this like X, Y. So this coordinate was three, one, I just ignored this at, three, one, five, two, four, three. Right, just, just, just the X and Y component. And that's how I decided. That's how I decided where they should go, just around about, like, it doesn't have to be exact, obviously. And that's, yeah. Okay. You probably could also choose any pair, and it would work, because you're just doing that, but I think it's simplest to just think X, Y. Okay, so someone throw a question at me, if there's, if you have a question, if not, I'll just find one. Yeah. In an. Four point two point sixteen, okay. Okay, B. B, yeah. So these problems are uh, they're pretty good, I, I like short distance problems, uh. Having trouble with the later ones, with the like parallel line ones, or or non-parallel line ones, I couldn't figure that one out, but. Uh which hopefully we'll get to, but the plane I can do. So in each, so it says pretty much, in each case, find the shortest distance from the point P to the plane, and find the point Q on the plane closest to P. So for B, the point P is three, one minus one, and the plane is two X plus Y minus Z. Equals three. Um equals six. So let me draw this quickly, so we have a plane. Right, we have a plane like that, with a normal vector like that, right, and then we have a point P like over here. So to do this. Let me just think quickly. Yeah, yeah. So to do this, in fact, I'll actually place, let's just, we can do this, right, let's place the normal vector directly here. Right, I guess it goes further, right, it can go, the normal vector is any multiple of that vector, but let's just say that, let's say it goes through P. Okay, it doesn't matter, it's like, just like where you place the normal vector. Um so first of all, the normal vector is two, one, negative one. Right, two, one, negative one. Let's also just choose an arbitrary point R. Okay, and that will be, uh just, just looking at this equation, let me just choose something, so zero, zero, minus six. Right, zero, zero, minus six is equal to six, if you put into this. Right, so that's our arbitrary point. R is zero, 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 minus six, that's on the plane. So to find this shortest distance, so this, here I'm gonna drop, uh. Uh I guess I should draw it the other way, actually, so I want P R. Right, so P R. The shortest distance is this, it's, it's a multiple of the normal vector, it's that green length right there, right? And what that's gonna be, is it's gonna be, I'll just write it out, so that, I'll call it um, I guess like, that's Q, right? So P, that's P Q, so P Q is equal to the projection. Of P R onto the normal vector. Right, because you imagine the projection is pretty much saying, let's just cast a shadow onto here, what is the length of this? What's that vector, that's what we're looking for. Right, that's P Q. Right, so the projection of N onto P R, uh a projection of P R onto N, sorry. And well, we can find P R quickly, right, P R is, P R is R minus P. Right, uh R minus P, so zero minus three, zero minus one, negative six plus one is negative five. Right? Um then this, this projection, so projection of P R onto N is going to be, so I'll write, I'll write it out fully, so P Q, so. It's equal to P R dot N over the magnitude of N squared. Times N. Yeah. So P R dot N is going to be, uh so I'll just write it out, negative three, negative one. Negative six plus one, yeah. Minus, I'm just checking I did that right. Dot two, one, minus one. Over the magnitude of the, of the normal vector squared, so the magnitude of normal vector is, is gonna be six, so it's just gonna be, oh, sorry, root six, so squared is just six. Times the normal vector, two, one, minus one. Okay? Yeah. Oh, like you, the, the random point you chose. Uh no, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, no, it's a random point, it's any, any point on the plane works. Three, zero, zero, yeah, that should work, that should work. Um maybe somewhere else you made a small mistake, that's probably, probably what that is, right? Okay, so I'll keep going, negative six, minus one, plus five over six, times two, one, minus one. Right, uh so then this is negative ten over six. Two, one, minus one, so that's going to be negative five over three, two, one, minus one. So this length here is P Q, right, this, the length that we're looking for. So the magnitude of that is gonna be the shortest distance. Right, so. Um. Yeah, I had no idea, no idea. I guess I, oh, what I did in my head is I combined this into negative four, for some reason. That's, that's what I did, that's why I got negative ten, uh okay, so that's um negative two. So one third, negative a third, I mean. Negative a third, so this is actually equal to negative two thirds, negative a third, a third. Right, and so the magnitude of that is just each component squared and then square root it, so I'll just punch that in quickly. So negative two thirds, negative a third. A third, so the magnitude is root six over three, and that's the shortest distance to the plane. Now, what is that, um, what is that point in particular? Well, it's P plus P Q. Right, P plus P Q. So let's do that, the point Q is P plus P Q, or I should say, O P is O. Sorry, O Q is O P plus P Q. So O P, yeah, or just the point P is three, one, minus one. Right, three, one, might, just make sure I got that one, right, yeah, and then P Q is this distance. Right, is this, this right here, so plus negative two thirds, minus a third. A third. Okay, and so that is uh three minus two thirds is two and a third, so seven thirds. Um one plus negative a third is just two thirds, negative one plus a third is negative two thirds. And that's the point of the point Q, which is the closest to point P on the plane. That's Q, which is O Q. Um yeah, yeah, so R P, think about that for a second. R P. Mm-hmm, let me just think, what would that do, so you did R P. So notice, I, I drew that at first, and I switched it around, so what that would do is, well, you pretty much have this vector, right, that's R P. The projection of that onto that should be the same magnitude still, though. Yep, should be the same magnitude. Um. Yeah. Mm-hmm. But when you get to this step to find the actual point, that'll be different, it'll be, uh, oh, no, no, no. No, it won't, it won't be different, it, it, well, I don't even think it'll be different, because you'd still be doing P, well, I guess you'd be doing. Yeah, I, I guess you'd be doing P minus P Q there, you'd be doing P minus P Q. Right, instead of P plus P Q. Yeah, because P Q is the other direction, yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, you just use subtracting there. That's the only difference, so maybe, did, did you get root six over three? No, yeah, so maybe some. Yeah? Okay, yeah, for sure. Okay, so any questions about this question, I ca- I'd love to do more short assistance questions, they're, they're pretty tricky. Anything on the plane, has to be on the plane. Yeah, anything on the plane, so anything that, any X, Y, Z that satisfies the equation of the plane. Well, so just, you can just guess and, and check, right, so, or, or, you know, think about it here, right, so let's, let's say I'm trying to get some combination. Of X, Y, and Z, specifically this combination, to equal six, we want it to equal six. Right, so I know I can choose, well, zero for here, zero for here, and negative six for here, right, if I, if I add these together, two times this one. Right, two times this one, plus this one, minus this one, well, uh sorry, minus. Let me write it like this. Minus negative six, right, that's six. So that means that the point zero, zero, minus six, that's a point on the plane. Right, zero, zero, minus six, zero, zero, minus six. If you put that into the equation, and it's true, then that's a point on the plane. Okay, yeah. It can be any, any point at all. Okay, guys, any, any questions, I think I'm gonna take a five minute break. Or maybe a ten minute break, yeah, let's say a ten minute break. Until uh until seven forty, yeah, seven fifty-three, okay, unless anyone has a question this second, then I'll wait, take the break in another few minutes, but. Yes. No, no, that's not a test, no. Some classes have gone. Oh, that's true, yes. Yeah, the practice problems extend there, so that's why, but from Cutler, you don't go to chapter five. Okay, guys, then, watch this. I mean, sorry, does anyone have a question this second? A little more, a little more here, this, here? Yeah, yeah, so we're trying to find this point right here, we're looking for this point here, right? So to find that, one way to do is to take point P and add this vector, this green vector going down like that. Right, so we start here, add that vector, we know that vector, that's the shortest distance vector, right, here, I'll just, just draw this again, right? So we, we, we know this vector, this, this green one here, is the shortest distance, it's P Q. So we start at P, add P Q, we get Q, and that's the point that we're looking for. Makes sense?